Good evening. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to our city council meeting tonight. There are two public forums set aside for public comments, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance where you entered and at the podium rail to my left over here. Please give the card to the city clerk. Jackie sits right here. Would you raise your hand, Jackie? Right here, and she'll make sure it comes up to us up here. When I call upon you, I ask that you request your comments in no more than three minutes and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we are.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have an opportunity to have the invocation given by our own councilman, Scott Black. Following that, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, at this time, we pause at the beginning of this city council meeting to express gratitude to thee for the abundance of blessings that has been bestowed upon our city. We're grateful for the residents, for the diversity of residents that we have, for the good people that live within North Las Vegas. I ask a blessing upon each of them, families and individuals, that they may have a sense of gratitude for the blessings that we have in this country and in this community. I ask a blessing that the residents of North Las Vegas can be watched over and protected, especially the children and those that are ill or struggling, that they can have the blessing of sustenance and healing and recovery that they need. Please guide and direct our thoughts and actions this evening as we work to further the cause of our city government, that we can make decisions that will be beneficial to those that we serve. Please watch over and bless the many wonderful employees that serve throughout our community or our first responders in law enforcement, and ask these favors and blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. If we could remain standing, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Moving on to council items. Councilman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, we had, I think, like 800 people, lots of dozens and dozens of families, right? It was a fantastic time had by all. It was the hardest festival and resource fair that was last Saturday here at Liberty Park, and it was hosted by our very good friend, Councilwoman Goines Brown, who is not here. But on her behalf, I wanted to say a big thank you to all of the people, of all the sponsors that came out, and of course, you know, to city staff who helped make it happen. I wanted to thank definitely the firemen who helped push the Liberty Bell out and then back in. We had people ringing the Liberty Bell. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the Hispanic Student Union, Grand Central High School Hispanic Student Union students for being the primary volunteers. Also, I was not able to go out to the Tapestry Groundbreaking yesterday. It is in Ward 1. I wasn't able to attend, but I'm thrilled to know that it's going to bring additional jobs to our community. And of course, we welcome them to our growing North Las Vegas family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just, once again, we had our pause in the park at Nature Discovery Park on the 6th, and I could tell you that it was, it was an amazing event. It was well-attended, and I didn't expect to have that many people out there with so many little dogs and so many dogs dressed up. I mean, it was really, really good. The contest went well, and I must, and I did before, but I have to say that if it wasn't for Nancy and Rizel doing the outreach to all of those businesses, and I made sure that, excuse me, Sandy Lopez had put the thank yous in my newsletter, we wouldn't have been able to have that kind of turnout and the fun that we had up there. And the weather, of course, participated with it, so it's very good. So we're going to use that as a kind of a platform to do some outreach with our new Animal Protection Services officers that are no longer animal protection. They displayed their new vehicle out there, and we appreciate all that they do. So thank you to everybody who attended, and thank you to those ladies for making it a success. I have something here that I attended the ribbon cutting for the park service, with the park service, at the kiosk on Aliante Parkway. While the kiosk and the parking area is on Ward 4's side, I give the credit to my colleague and friend, Councilman Black and Lennar, for having it done. So he'll mention a little more on that than myself. But I did attend the opening of Cano Health opening, ribbon cutting in my ward along Craig Road. And again, that's an HMO, if you want to call it, but it's something that we need very much in this area, and thanks to all of those people, they're bringing medical services into the people that need it very much so, the minority people, including people that just don't have health care. And they have an amazing staff over there, so it's right next to Dignity Health, right on the corner of Camino Alnorte and Craig. So if, right now, it's open season for many, many people, whether it be Medicare or Medicaid, I suggest maybe you take a trip over there and see what they have to offer. And lastly, I did attend the Filipino Veterans Group Gala this past Saturday, honoring all of the Filipino veterans for their service. And it was very informative. I was aware of the, during World War II, the Death March that caused the loss of life of thousands of Filipino veterans or military at that point. We also lost American lives, but the involvement of the Filipino community during the war was magnificent, and for some reason, they're still not being recognized to some degree at the Washington level for their benefits, for their service to our country then. But the event was very well-attended. They expected about 150 people, and they wound up over 300. So they're very warm and friendly people, and no, there wasn't any lumpia there if you're a Filipino, but they did have some very, very great desserts and food. So thank you to all of them for their service and for what they do for our country today. Thank you, Mayor.
That's a great report. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Councilman Churchill mentioned the Tulie Springs Fossil Beds, Kiosk, Parking Lot Ribbon Cutting. Never thought I'd be so excited about a fresh parking lot, but it's pretty awesome, even though it is in Ward 4. I've been hanging out in that desert for about 20 years, riding my bike and walking with my family and my dog, and it's just an awesome treasure that we have right outside of North Las Vegas, the Tulie Springs Fossil Beds National Monument. And Lennar Homes, it really just started with a question. The park service and protectors of Tulie Springs came to us and said, hey, you know, we'd like to improve this from a visibility standpoint, the footprint for the kiosk, it's more identifiable, and also the safety of cars and pedestrians parking there. And it was just gravel, and so I asked Lennar Homes, and the answer was yes, and to the tune of about $150,000, they donated this beautiful parking lot with striping and ingress and egress, and it really enhanced the visibility of the kiosk as well as the safety for the parkgoers there. So I'd like to really thank Lennar Homes for their generous contribution. And also, on Saturday, after the ribbon cutting, I went over to Craig Ranch Park, I rode my bike down there. I had my cycling shoes. I took my saddlebag off my bike, and I signed up for the cyclocross race. It was Battle Born Series Bike Race. It was racing all day long, amateurs, kids, up to pro and semi-pro. I raced in the beginner class, and I took second to last. I paused there. But the guy that was in last place had no chance of catching me. It was an awesome event. A couple of the participants said that literally Craig Ranch Park is the absolute best venue for a cyclocross race on the West Coast, so thank you.
You know, I heard about that. I heard that you thought you were in first place. You were so far behind everyone else.
Yeah, I thought I was battling that guy for second, but it was second to last, so...
And since our wonderful councilwoman, the person that makes this beautiful council that we are, having her makes it complete, I'll just say something. I usually don't, but she was at both these events. We had two groundbreakings this week, and most of the city council was able to attend. There were 1,000 new jobs were brought into, or going to be brought into our city, 3 million square foot of building for these projects at $25 an hour. So in North Las Vegas, we are diversifying the economy of Southern Nevada. And a special thanks to Dylan and Patrick Walker on the PIO team, Patrick, especially you, for getting the press out there and letting them see what's happening here. And economic development, Jared, you and your team, obviously, everything starts as you sell our city, and you show them how to get along and move through the process. So we have great directors here, great people work here. Everybody's responsible for the success here, and I just want to thank you. But I will tell Dale and all you guys, things are coming towards you now. More work is coming, you know, as we move these things forward through the process of roads and inspections on buildings, so get ready. So anyway, moving on to the public forum, this time set aside for public comment on posted agenda items. This public forum excludes discussion of public hearing items, which will be heard later and separately. So if you want to speak on any items listed under the Consent Agenda, ordinance final action, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or anybody here from the public that would like to speak on posted agenda items?
No, sir, we do not.
No, and I see no one coming forth, so we will close the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Item 1, approve city council regular meeting agenda of November 17, 2021. Mayor and council, it's our recommendation to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the approval of the agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move for approval of the agenda as published.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 14. It's our recommendation to approve the consent agenda as published.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
With the proof as published.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Go ahead, set public future hearing dates.
Yes, Mayor, so noted.
I direct you to set hearing dates as necessary for future public hearing dates.
So noted, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor, council, item 16, approve ZN 21, 2021, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3097, an ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 17.71 plus or minus acres from the OL Open Land District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, ZN 21, 2021, LoSi Road and 215 Beltway for property located at the northeast corner of LoSi Road and Deer Springs Way and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on this item? We'll open this up for public comment right now. Anybody'd like to speak? Seeing no one here and no one wanting to respond, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm familiar with this project, so even though there's nobody here to speak to it, I'll be happy to go ahead and make a motion to approve ZN-21-2021.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on, ordinance is final action now.
Item 17, pass and adopt ordinance number 3101, amending ordinance number 3071. No, I just said that. Amending Chapter 8, Section 015 of Title 2 of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code, to adjust the ward boundaries of the city in accordance with the redistricting plan based on current population as determined by the last preceding national census and providing other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. So this is on the reorganization that the state just finished their stuff for their redistricting responsibilities, and the cities have the same responsibility. I've asked Director Alfredo to comment on this just for a second, and just to give us an update on how it ended up.
Yes, Mayor. Mayors and members of the council, on October 14th, we published the redistricting maps online as part of our regular council agenda, and then, obviously, the judge and I were here on the 20th to make the presentation to the council. This item was then introduced on the 3rd and published on the Review Journal on the 6th. Anytime during public hearings, I'm sorry, public forum, residents had the opportunity to speak. We also had the ability to email the clerk for any comments that were needed, and the individuals that did show up to voice comment, we actually followed up with them and provided many information that was necessary. So I think we're really proud of the work we did in getting the word out about our redistricting, and we're really happy that we got everything done. So that concludes my presentation.
No, we watched you go about this, and fantastic. Let me ask if there's anybody here from the public. Anybody here from the public like to talk to us about redistricting, our boundaries? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the council?
Mayor, I did have a question, and Alfredo and I did discuss this as to when these changes take effect. So somebody already brought that question up to me, and I didn't know the answer.
So if we vote on it tonight, then that's the question, okay?
Right, so these changes will, as far as effect for voting purposes, will be in the next election.
Right.
As far as effect for representing purposes, you represent the current wards you were voted into, so the representation...
Or, we actually talked to the judge about this and requested legal look at it. And so the ward maps take effect immediately for adequate representation, and so, but as I told you, councilman in spirit, I mean, residents did elect you for four years, and so they sort of considered you their councilman, but on the ward boundaries, the ward boundaries take effect immediately according to our charter and other regulations.
That's fine, thanks.
And I think there's some times that, I don't know what you would call it, like a benchmark or a litmus test, or, you know, whenever we came into, when I came into the city in 2013, they still hadn't done this yet. So this is an example of one of the things where you can look at as far as how high-functioning staff is today and how high-functioning our elected body is today versus in the past, because this was not done, there were two elections that happened with the, post-census in 2011 and 2013. So this is an example of something that you can circle and be like, you know, we've made progress. We're doing things better today than we did them in the past, because this was done timely, in an orderly fashion, prior to the next election as required by law.
Thank you.
So I'll just make a thought on this. I appreciate the city hiring Judge Kessler. He's done it for us before. He's done a fantastic job for us. I think you were all consulted and understood what was going on, a very professional job, and I want to make sure, and I'm getting, if Fred's listening, I'm getting a lot of nods on this then. So if there's no one else that would like to speak on this, seeing no one from the public coming forth, we'll close the public hearing once again, and the chair will ask for a motion.
Mayor, just one quick comment. The most remarkable thing is that the judge was able to divide us up, and 65,000 seems to be the actual issue. We are really close. I'm talking within, I think, 30 residents of each ward. We're talking about the population split. Mayor, I'm proud to represent Ward 1. In, there is a Latino majority, of course, in this area, but overall, we oversee, we supervise, we provide leadership for, by far, the most diverse city in the state, the only minority-majority city in the state. And I'm really happy of the job that Judge Kessler did in working with all the stakeholders, and I know I would be really honored to make the motion to approve this.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Mayor and council, just a couple items. I know that it's been a quick meeting, a short meeting. This is the first agenda that I've had in a few months where I haven't had to make a lot of changes to it, because our clerk's office, there's been some changes there, and they're, you know, we're getting things in well-working order. I hope you guys feel that. There's still lessons and things that we're learning. But on that note, and it's not just because I didn't have to make any changes to update the clerk's office on how we need to do it differently, but wanted to make you all aware, and I've talked with you all, that we no longer have an acting city clerk. We now have a city clerk. So congratulations to her.
Thank you, everybody.
Second item, just real quickly, we get, I know you all get lots of calls, we get lots of calls about our education, and in particular CCSD, where there's a lot of struggles there. I think, you know, people that like public meetings are, you know, looking forward to tomorrow night because they just get to pop their popcorn and sit and watch a spectacle. We do get these calls. I've talked with many of you, staff is, we're proactively looking at different things. One of the things that's going to be coming up is we are, per NRS, other jurisdictions have created, it's a community educational, what's the actual title, Community Education Advisory Board. And that's something we have not done, but we will be meeting and talking with you all about that. Now, this is not, you know, education and CCSD is not something that we normally dive into, but considering we have our own school now, we've clearly moved into recognizing this as a problem within the, as the mayor likes to say, the corporate boundaries of four corners of North Las Vegas, and if it happens to those corporate boundaries, it's our problem. So just wanted to let you know that and the public know it, that we do hear the concerns. It's something that is brought up regularly in any conversation that I've had over the last month or so, and so we will, we'll be bringing some things back, starting, I think it's the second meeting in December, is when we'll start having conversations on starting this advisory board and getting some input from you all on direction and ideas as far as that board, as we kind of figure out what to do with it. So just wanted to report on those two items, and I have nothing else to report, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, may I just point something out? I'm very happy that we'll actually have a chance, you know? As a current high school teacher, and of course, you know, our wonderful colleague, being a relatively recently retired, you know, administrator, you know, these are things that we hold very dear, and I know that the mayor has, you know, made it quite clear that it is definitely a point of interest here in the city of North Las Vegas. I will point out that the city has worked in the past, worked in partnership with the Clark County School District. We haven't had the administrative meeting in our wards like we have had in the past that we did before school started, so we could get the administrators from our wards, the schools and wards, to meet our city staff, our police, definitely, and of course, our public work staff, to go ahead and lay the groundwork for partnerships, because of course, there's always things that happen. In Councilman Churchill's issue, I know he had an issue with bus stops and safety regarding to that, and of course, you know, it does intersect with what the city does and how we do this. I'm looking very much forward to things that we can do again to support education in the city of North Las Vegas, and just when we realize, you know, we deal with some very special situations in our wards. When CP Squires does an event to fundraise so they can send their kids, and they have a remarkable archery program, and they'll raise $3,000 and $4,000, which is pretty good for them, right? And then we see at a school, I won't mention the name of the school, and the parents there, they'll have a fundraiser, and they bring in $35,000, $40,000, $50,000. There's a glaring disparity, you know, between what our parents and our community can bring to support children and what the children from other communities, what they can expect to support. And it's just part of what it is, you know, growing up on this side of town, and anything that we can do to, of course, you know, give our kids a boost, give a push, I think that is something that this board definitely is all about, and speaking for my colleagues on the board.
If you recall, last time, when we had the quarterly report from CCSD, one of the things that was clear in briefings with you all is that there was a desire, as you pointed out, I mean, everyone has something that they're concerned about. And so we had, you all had asked this, the assistant superintendent to brief with you all before the next council, before the next quarterly report, which they're required to do by law. We were a little shocked that the response following the meeting was as if there was not, they did not have the bandwidth or time to do that, which is kind of what's an impetus to like, you know what, then maybe we need to do some of the things that are under the law as far as providing this board and kind of following some of the administrative things that are in the law, because that was a little surprising. I mean, it was something that, for them to get back with us that even though by law they're required to quarterly report to the governing body, that they don't have time to meet and brief on the individual issues that you all had. And I thought it was a courtesy that city and that you all as council and mayor provided to say, hey, we'd like to, you know, have a conversation that maybe isn't as formal as this, so we can really dig down into things. We were a little surprised by that.
Can I ask the city attorney something? Was this in, passed and approved by the legislature? I mean, can you give us an update? Maybe we just found out about this, or...
Yes, Mayor. So in 2017, the legislature passed AB 469. In 2017, the legislature passed AB 269, which is to, the intent was to localize the Clark County School District into the local school precincts. And so we're in one local school precinct, and that's why quarterly, we do have the assistant superintendent who gives us that report of what's going on in our district. The legislation also allows for each governing body of a city or the Board of County Commissioners to create one or more educational advisory boards to advise and report to the board as well, the Board of Trustees, as well as to the school district on things they'd like to see or how they would like to facilitate education within the community. And so these are all things that are provided for in the existing legislation.
Okay, thank you very much, counsel. So we've got the legislature of approval on that, and we're following, the city manager says the opportunity to put her board together. Thank you. Is that the end of your report? This is probably the fastest meeting we've ever had, but we have some guests here that I've asked. Jared Luke, is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak to us at this time? We're going to close that portion of the public comment, but David Johnson, is Dave, I have, after you, I've got, I'm going to ask Jared to come up just for a second, introduce some of the guests that he has here. Come, David, please, please. You might recall David was here about two weeks ago, and so he's just coming back to report.
Yes, sir. Dave Johnson, 220 Whitney Breeze, beautiful North Las Vegas. As the mayor was saying, last week I spoke about my concerns with the way that my community's park is bisected by a highway, and there's no way to get across the street, there's no crosswalk. You have to walk about a mile and a half to get from one corner to the other corner. It's not practical, kids don't do it, and it's a dangerous situation. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to work with Alfredo. His team is incredibly professional, they're responsive, and they followed through on their commitments. But unfortunately, as we are talking, I do feel that he's hamstrung by some limitations in policy. He's offered to discuss with the engineering team, traffic engineering team, some of my concerns, but I just want to bring to attention that we are going through a generational change in technology and the way people get to work and do their daily commuting. With Neuro and Lyft announcing autonomous vehicle traffic within our city, EV tall aircraft, electric vertical takeoff and landing, right around the corner, probably within the next three years as well, people are going to be commuting in radically different ways. In parallel with this, the younger generation is demanding new ways to get more environmentally friendly and healthier modes of transportation. They want to take their bikes, they want to take their electric scooters. All of this slow-speed transportation is incredibly dangerous. I went through the city's website, and I found that in 2019, this council actually commissioned a study on bicycle traffic, and it seems nothing was done. Compared that to what's currently existing today, and I didn't see much progress. The road in question actually was recommended on that to increase, provide a bike lane and all of that, so it was... So it was seen back then that it's an issue and nothing has been done. I am a private citizen, but I'm familiar with limitations in terms of construction and all of that. I've had the, been blessed to be a project manager on the MSG Sphere and the new University of Nevada Las Vegas Medical Education Building. So I'm familiar with a lot of these regulations. And it's going to take some political decision-making to energize a change in the way that we look at how our roads are managed. Maybe it's a slow lane and a fast lane system, but we need to rethink this. So that's all I want to say. I'm very passionate about this and I'm gonna, as I manage a project and overcome barriers, I understand it takes teamwork and that's what I'm hoping to build here, to make this change happen. Because I believe in the vision of the city of North Las Vegas to make this a community of choice in the 21st century and the old way isn't working. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Would you stay afterwards just so I can meet your wife and children too?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Stanley, did you want to say something real quick? Because we're about ready to end this portion of the public comment. We're gonna bring up a little presentation, so you'd be the last speaker we have.
Appreciate it.
And welcome this evening.
Your honor, a couple things. There is a significant event that has been brought to my attention. It's in its seventh year, takes place at China.
Is your mic, Stanley? We can't hear you very much. Is the microphone on or?
Can you hear me better now?
There you go.
Okay. Significant event that's been brought to my attention just recently, on the corner of Cheyenne Civic Center, in its seventh year, called the Love Festival. Had 3,500 people last year. Pastor Bobby Smith's expecting 7,000 this year. It's an outreach of all kinds and that love means a lot of different things in a lot of different places there. And I was wondering if this body was familiar with that particular festival? And if not, certainly I want to bring it to his attention for it to be because I've now taken on the role of bringing it to the attention to all the people who don't know about it, who should know about it and make it even grander thing. So that's my question to, I guess, Councilman Burrow or anybody here on the council. I know that Councilwoman Goins is familiar with the member, Pastor Bobby Smith, who is the founder and producer of the festival, because she's reached out to him and asked him to put in an application to be on the Veterans Communication Commission, which I certainly support in communication with Rebecca Gibson and helping her bring forth some commission members who live in Las Vegas and who want to do the work. So my question to the council is, are you familiar with this particular festival? And if not, certainly we want to go ahead and get you familiar with it so they can get, have the council's full support.
Okay, so Director Molecchio, right there next to you where you were sitting or preparing to sit, he's Assistant City Manager over parks, wrecks and all those kind of things. Maybe you could enlighten him and we can easily be the person to talk to.
Sounds real good. Secondly, I don't know if this is an appropriate question there, but I was trying to find out, who is your person handling your campaign that I can talk to?
Little ladder for me, partner.
Who is the person handling your campaign that I can talk to?
Who's what? My campaign?
Aren't you running for governor?
Yeah, but I'm not talking about that here.
No, no, I'm just asking. I was trying to figure out, who is that person? I know we can't talk about it now.
No, I don't even want to get into that. I'm doing city business right now, Stanley, but I appreciate you, okay?
I guess when it's over, you can tell me then, huh?
No, that, yeah, I can talk to you later. I'm staying after the meeting, but.
All right, okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, I.
That's gonna bring you right here.
Okay, but at this point in time, I'm working for the city. So Jared, Jared Luke, would you want to please come down for just a second and maybe bring a couple of your guests with you? It is a short meeting and I wanted you to know how much the Chamber of Commerce is involved in our community and what they're doing. And Jared's in a special group and he's got a couple of his classmates with him and maybe they can explain the program, the Leadership Las Vegas Program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Jared Luke for the record, City of North Las Vegas. Yeah, we, the three of us are currently enrolled in the Leadership Las Vegas Program. It's a year-long, or I should say, what, 10, 11 month long program. Every month, we get together and study a certain topic and most of it is socially-minded. And I think the December one coming up is government and politics and part of the homework was to attend a city council meeting. So I wanted to just thank Joe Coe and Adam Claussen, my buddies here for joining. I'll let them introduce themselves really quick.
Thank you for having us. My name is Adam Claussen and really grateful to be here this evening, even though it was a quick meeting, was very informative. Just again, grateful to be here. Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. My name is Joe Coe. I do have a day job and my employer gives me the opportunity to participate in Leadership Las Vegas. As Jared stated, it is a 10-month-long program. And the reason that we are attending some of these sessions now is because we will have a mock session for which our class will have to do something very similar, where we will have various bills that we will have to lobby for and also show opposition of. And it's going to give us an opportunity by sitting in these sessions to learn a little bit more about how it's actually done. And that's coming up in a couple of weeks.
Oh, good, good for the chamber. You guys will need to fill out a blue card so we put your name into the roll, you know, the record today. But Jared, do you want to finish up or is that it?
No, Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thank you very much. It's nice to have you gentlemen here today. So it looks like we've, we've been at our city council meeting and we're getting closer to the holidays here. I don't think we'll have a holiday before, I mean, a meeting before Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, our employees have a great time and be thankful for this great country we live in. And with that, we'll close this meeting. Meeting is adjourned.